Yes, we're on live.
They were live?
Yes.
Okay, this time I'd like to call the Galian City Council meeting to order is via Zoom is on May 25th at seven o'clock. First, we'll have the pledge allegiance to the flag. Do you want to hear that if you wish?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The two the republic from which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
A nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Do I need a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Roll call, council members.
Ms. Alt.
Here.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes, here.
Dr. Felner.
Here.
Mr. Ivy.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Triplett.
Here.
You know, all seven members are present. Next, we'll have roll call of elected officials of the Safety Service Director.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Auditor Baldinger.
Here.
Director of Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. I know I heard you.
Okay.
Well, hold on, we're not done yet. Treasurer Sparks. I know. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
Okay, now, you've all had a chance to look at the minutes of the May 11th meeting. There are a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 11th, 2021 regular meeting.
And Dr. Felner made the motion seconded by.
I'll second it.
Mr. Richard seconded it. Are there additions or corrections? If none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Likewise, minutes of the May 11th meeting have been hereby approved. We have two additions to add to the agenda tonight. The first one is ordinance 2021 dash 46. Do I hear a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add ordinance 2021 dash 46.
Motion may be made by Mr. Triplett. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Richard seconded. Roll call.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
In the ordinance 2021 dash 46, been added to the agenda by a seven no vote. Next is the Ed Resolution number 2021 dash 13. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add Resolution 2021 dash 13 to the agenda.
Mr. Ivy made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Triplett seconded. Roll call.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Hey, Resolution 2021 dash 13 been added to the agenda by seven no vote. So next, we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Who was that?
Dr. Felner.
Dr. Felner made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Richard seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close. The agenda has been approved as amended. Moving on to legislation versus ordinance 2021 dash 38. It's a third reading.
Ordinance number 2021 dash 38. Intended ordinance amending ordinance number 2020 dash 92 permanent 2020 appropriations by appropriating funds in the permanent improvement fund and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading, the ordinance discussion.
Yes, Mr. Watt.
Yes.
Um, this is, uh, again, the the third reading, and it has to do with using some of the proceeds from our sale of the Commerce Center toward infrastructure out in the Freeze Project. There was some, uh, comments on social media that this had to do with Freeze Funds. I'd just like to make that clear that these were not Freeze Funds using for this. Um, but more to a point, I'd like to make a motion to delete the emergency clause in this ordinance for two reasons. The emergency clause, there's no deadline or urgency for the the passage of this, which is usually associated with the emergency clause. We we don't have the 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 project, uh, designed or anything like that. So the the emergency clause is is kind of useless. The second reason, and to be forthright about it, the, uh, this is the third reading, and it's going to go to a final vote this evening. With the emergency clause attached, it's going to require five positive votes, whereas with the emergency clause deleted, a simple majority would allow this to move forward. So I am making a motion to delete the emergency clause in this ordinance.
You've heard the motion by Dr. Felner. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Mr. Ivy seconded it.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Uh, could I just, you know, just for sake of clarification, to make sure we understand what that means, that would involve removing the words and declaring an emergency from the caption, and it would also involve removing what is Section 6 from the ordinance. Julie, do you agree with me on that?
Yeah. It would just say that it would take effect at earliest time allowed by law after its passage.
Yeah, but if the Section 6 isn't there, Julie, that's automatically in place.
Okay, well, we normally always said something like that may, may, would leave like, um.
We just need clarity for this amendment.
Right, yeah.
Other discussion?
Um, Mr. President, also, I'd like to point out that if if you want, if we're wanting to do this, for the header, you would have to remove and declare it an emergency.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Michael. And then you're going to have to change Section 6.
Right.
Julie, can you just read in general what that normally says?
Uh, that Section 6 will say that this ordinance shall take effect at the earliest time allowed by law. Would want to be changed, too.
So if Doc, you could change your motion to be consistent with that and whoever seconded, the same.
Um, I'd like to change my motion to involve, uh, the the caption to remove the phrase and declaring an emergency, and also to rewrite Section 6, um, that the ordinance will be passed as early as possible as defined by law. Is that adequate?
That's, yeah, as Julie said, and then whoever seconded is going to have to agree with you. I second.
Mr. Ivy seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
No.
Mr. Triplett.
No.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Oh.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
My volume is not good. Was that four to three?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so it passes.
Yes, the amendment passed.
Okay, now back to the ordinance itself, okay? Julie?
I have, um, Roberta had asked to be in here, but she had to go away, so she sent, um, an email that she wanted read into the record regarding this. Um, so I'll read that now.
Okay, go ahead.
It says, honorable city council members, I am asking you to vote no on ordinance number 2021 dash 38, which appropriates 400,000 for infrastructure expenses for the proposed Free Center. This 400,000 appropriation is clearly clearly putting the heart cart before the horse as the Free Center project continues to be a questionable project. I want to remind you that the mayor first proposed that the city be a sports complex, which the city did not need. But he, then he proposed an event center, which the city did not need. And now he proposes the Free Center, which is going to benefit out of town sports team and which also the city does not need either. If you do a simple cost versus benefit analysis, the Free Center project should not take place. It is a high cost project and has very low benefit to the community. Most of Galian's residents will not benefit at all from the Free Center, but Galian residents will be responsible for the costs of this project. And the Free Center project will have ongoing high overhead to just keep it open. Where is all this money coming from? The Free Center project is being pushed and promoted by a small special interest group, some of whom do not even live in Galian. The project has become a blank check that will become a huge burden on the taxpayers or city. It is time for city council to do their job and take extra care in spending public funds. Please do not waste $400,000 on infrastructure for the Free Center when Galian could use that money elsewhere that would really benefit the community. Roberta Wade.
Thank you for reading that, Julie. Other discussion?
Yes, um.
Yes, I also have, you can go ahead, Dr. Felner, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, um, I I would just like to point out that, um, uh, Ms. Wade is correct in that the Free Center is far from a done deal and and built. However, um, it's, I believe that the monies used for infrastructure out in that area for potential businesses is is not a waste of money, and I feel like, um, that will eventually benefit whatever project goes out there. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Yes, um, I just kind of wanted to echo off of what Dr. Felner said. I appreciate Roberta's comment and concern. Uh, we're not voting on the Free Center tonight. We're voting on infrastructure for economic development out there. I I don't, I don't think that this is for the Free Center. I think it's for business in general. So, um, that was really my only comment. You know, I absolutely agree with putting infrastructure out that way, whether it be for the Free Center in the long term or for other businesses as we stand today.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion?
Mr. President, um, this, actually, I've got a couple of questions for the port, and I see that we have several members here. So, uh, whoever would like to take this would would be great. Um, the, um, I know, and I'm not going to get in, last we said, uh, this is infrastructure for development out at, uh, primarily the property that the city donated to the Port Authority. I'm curious, what is the, if the planning or what is thought of beyond the Free Center? If you take that, um, off the table, so to speak, and I'm not referring plus or minus, I'm just asking, uh, what is the, um, plans for the development of the rest of that property out there? Do we know?
I don't think that's a fair statement, but I'll allow Chad to look into the crystal ball.
Well, I I appreciate that, Doc Felner, but I actually was talking to one of the board, the Port Authorities.
Yes, I apologize.
So, um, yeah, I guess to to Doc's point, there is nothing currently that is lined up to go in out there. However, the infrastructure that's being put in place would service not just the parcel of of land that is now owned by the port that's donated by the city, but several other parcels of of land out there. And I truly believe that if it's the desire of council to spur economic development in that area, um, to to be coupled with the widening of 598, with the new building that's going up where the old Pico was, with the turn lane that's being put in there, all of that investment that's being done in that area, you are going to need a a a site that is ready for development. And so some of that development may or may not happen at the behest of the city. Some of that development may happen, uh, at the desire of the other property owners out there. Because again, the the city doesn't own all that property that that is, uh, going to, you know, butt that road. Uh, I just think that the, if you add in that cost of of the infrastructure to a potential development opportunity in the city of Galian, it then makes the cost benefit, uh, ratio for those businesses untenable. So I think it's something that is a a worthwhile investment for the capital improvement funds that are there in place.
Carl, may I amplify a couple?
Go ahead, Mayor. Go ahead, Mayor.
First of all, on the, um, the the initial question, it's going to be something commercial in that area unless there's a change in zoning. So I think when you think, you know, will there be a, um, a manufacturing facility out there if the Free Center doesn't happen? Or will there be some sort of mixed use? It's, it has for now, seven or eight years been thought of, envisioned, if you'll accept that word, uh, as a, as largely a commercial development. So that I, that tries to go at the first, answering the first question. Before you all vote, I think it's important to to note a couple of things. Uh, and that is that the, I don't know, vast majority, I think it's about 85% of the money on the roadway element of this project, this proposal, this infrastructure, is non-local money. There's two sources of state funds that have been committed to the project, and there'll be a very small, and we can talk about that if you want to, element of roadway yet to be funded to complete that part of it. The other two pieces that are, that we're talking about tonight are, is money, this Capital Improvements Fund. I think, uh, some folks have been on council long enough to remember when we didn't have that and where that fund came from. And it came from being, yeah, I'm not the most entrepreneurial guy on the screen tonight or gal on the screen, but it came from taking a risk of accepting the old, what we ended up calling the Commerce Center, but the old HTI building. And there are other council members who remember the criticism that 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 the administration, I don't like that term very much, but that was, um, suggested that this would be a white elephant, has turned out to be something far more than a white elephant. I wish I had remembered exactly how much revenue was generated when we rented it, but it was several hundred thousand dollars during the next gen. That went into the general fund. That was good for the general fund in those years. When it was sold, uh, through an open competitive process, uh, that money received from that has gone into this Capital Improvements Fund. So I don't want to allow Mrs. Wade or anyone else to shortcut the thinking and allow it to be forgotten where the Capital Improvements Fund came from. And, you know, I'm, I imagine that Gary Frank House is itching to say the same thing or something like that, because it would be a shame, uh, to somehow confuse these dollars, uh, for the water and sewer part with anything other than coming from developing the community. And really feel like that's where it should go. And, um, to repeat myself, the the roadway dollars, you'll have to be in government for a really long time, folks, to be able to, um, uh, get 460,000 and then 75,000 and really close the gap on the roadway, which I think, I don't know, two months ago, I thought it was, um, going to be difficult to attain. So I'll just stop there and say that, um, it would, it, y'all, I wish you would think twice before you, in effect, reject, uh, this effort to bring state dollars and use these Capital Improvements Fund to, um, you know, grow the community. So thanks for the allowing me to speechify for a minute, Carl.
Thank you. Mr. Richard?
Uh, yeah, I I just want, I I preset, uh, your, um, comments, Mayor, as well as, uh, Chad. The, um, and as Mayor knows, as many of you know, I sat on the council that approved the, received that, uh, building and complex out there, which, uh, as he said, has turned out to be a, uh, for lack of a better term, a diamond in the rough. So, uh, and I've always been for, uh, improving the, uh, anything that could help our businesses as well as our community, uh, around, uh, Galian. Uh, I guess my quest, though, is that, uh, back when the Valero and the, um, uh, hotel was being, uh, put together, uh, we put infrastructure out there to that property that is currently, uh, the Port Authority. Uh, there is currently a road that runs behind the hotel, which is subsequently, uh, has a, uh, um, cutout at the, uh, aforementioned property. So I'm kind of wondering, is, that's why my earlier question was to, um, if this is strictly for the, uh, Free Center, uh, other than just general development, uh, then, um, aren't we, and I hate, well, I'm not going to piggyback on somebody else's, uh, letter, but my comment would be is that, uh, until the, that has been determined on that project, aren't we kind of putting the horse, uh, the cart before the horse?
No.
Can I speak to that real quick, Tom and Mike?
Yeah, you can say what you need to, because I'm, just, just go to Delaware, Mike. Go down to that outlet mall. There is all kinds of put in place, ready to develop infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, you know, if if we want to compete, you got to do it. And if you're putting in a little stub, hasn't spurred it, I I still think it's a good idea. Excuse me for talking over you. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm fine.
If I could, let's talk about the Sleep Inn and and the Valero, uh, to address the cart before the horse. Neither of those happened until the infrastructure was committed to. So infrastructure has to be committed to, uh, in order to bring the development. So I think that answers the cart before the horse. I think the Free Center, I don't want to discount that this is part of the equation. Yeah, we're far from deciding that, but I think that's catalytic in nature. Chad answered the question to some degree, but I've had specific conversations with healthcare providers.
They can see me.
Commercial developers.
They can see me. I can't see them.
Really.
Yeah.
I just want, we can hear you.
I just want.
I didn't hear what Mr. Frank House said. Can I listen to what Mr. Frank House had to say again, please?
Yeah, we couldn't hear over Carl.
Yeah, I know. That's why I stopped.
Sorry.
All right.
So I, I mean, I think it's critical that we start to look at the Freeze as that catalytic nature project. I mean, we're submitted right now in a pre-vetting mode for a $2 million grant, all because of the Free Center. So yes, it's down the road. But while that's happening, we've been able to get, and Tom, it's actually 81 cents of every dollar is being paid for the state with this road extension that we're talking about. So of a $661,000 estimate for the road, $537,865 is being paid for by the state. So I find it very ironic that the state believes in us, and I'm I'm ready for us to start believing in us, because the catalytic project should be a reality. This is a no-brainer, 100%, not the cart in front of the horse. We've proven that with the Valero and the Sleep Inn. We needed the infrastructure before those. So I think it's, I I mean, it's it's a clear-cut case that from an economic development standpoint, we need to move this forward, because nothing else will happen. Um, and I would go on to challenge that no bigger projects can happen than maybe a sleep-in in a Valero and maybe another restaurant down the road. But if we really want something to be catalytic, I think our focus on this Freeze really needs to shift. It is not a waste of money. It generates $3 million of economic impact. It does have a return on investment. So I I want to make sure I state that I disagree 100% uh, with Mrs. Wade. She's incorrect, and she's not for economic development. I agree completely.
Other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2021 dash 38.
Okay, motion by Dr. Felner. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Mr. Ivy seconded. Discussion? If none, roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
No.
Mr. Triplett.
Oh.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Oh.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
I'm having trouble hearing, but it was a four to three vote, right, Julie?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so with the, uh, it's passed then by a four to three vote.
Yes, it did.
Okay, moving on to ordinance 2021 dash 41. It's the first reading.
Ordinance number 2021 dash 41. Intended ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Directors to submit an application for grant funds for the Ohio Airport Grant Program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, you've heard the reading, the ordinance, discussion?
Yes, this came through, uh, economic development and, um, airport, um, uh, could I please have, uh, Ms. Ward kind of, uh, just, uh, give us a Reader's Digest version of this?
Sure, this is the same project that we applied for last year for 100% funding through the state. We were not funded, so we're going back for a second time. This time, it would be 95% state, 5% local funding. And this is for an AWAS. It's an automated weather observing system. So pilots who would be landing at the Galian Municipal Airport could get real-time information on weather conditions and runway conditions. The project is estimated about $271,000, so the city's portion would be in the neighborhood of $15,000. Um, I think I can cover that with money that we budgeted for this year, so I would, I don't believe I'll have to ask for additional monies.
Thank you. Discussion?
Um, is there a deadline for application?
Yes, um, as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, if there are no other questions or discussion, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move on to the final.
I have a.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. What, what did you say the city's portion was going to be, Ms. Ward?
$14,263.
Thanks, Julie.
Any change with that, or no?
No.
Okay, back, Dr. Felner?
Sorry. Um, if there, are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance 2021 dash 41.
You've heard the motion by Dr. Felner, seconded by Mr. Richards. Uh, roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Let's suspend the rules on ordinance 2021 day 41 is passed by seven no vote. Back to the ordinance itself.
It's President.
Mr. Richard?
Uh, unless there's anybody that has any other comment, uh, I'd just like to add, uh, that these updates that we have been doing systematically out at the airport has, in fact, been a benefit, not only for the pilots and the folks that fly out there, but for the actual, uh, betterment of the actual airport. So, uh, and having said that, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, pass ordinance 2021 dash 41.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Richard seconded by Mrs., Mr. Ivy. Uh, discussion? And roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Okay, motion to final reading passed by a seven and oh vote. Moving on to ordinance 2021 dash 42 is the first reading.
Mr. Mr. Watt.
Yes.
Um, before we, uh, start on the this this ordinance, I was wondering if we could make a motion to allow Ms. Bell to not have to read the entire 14 pages of the heading.
I have to read it all, unfortunately.
Oh, you do? I'm sorry. Very well. I tried to save you, Julie.
I know. I already tried with Thomas, and he said.
Yeah, sorry about the, you're on, Julie. All right, I'm just gonna.
All right, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go refill my water.
Yeah, just everybody mute me here. Uh ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal amount of two million six hundred and six thousand nine hundred dollars in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying the cost of A, improving the city sewer treatment plant by acquiring screw pump equipment, together with all necessary appurtenances there to B, improving and upgrading the city's electric distribution system by replacing lines, poles, conductors, insulators, transformers, and other ancillary or auxiliary, sorry, auxiliary equipment, together with all necessary appurtenances there to improving the city sanitary sewer system by constructing a lift station along State Route Route sixty-one, together with site improvements is all necessary appurtenances there to B, improving various public infrastructure improvements within the and serving the Brent Road area, including but not limited to the design and construction of approximately one thousand lineal feet of new roadway between State Route five ninety-eight and Keller Drive, the widening of approximately nine hundred and twenty-five lineal feet of roadway along State Route five ninety-eight, including the designing construction of a turn lane and construction of the necessary stormwater drainage system for the property, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto, and E, road construction improvements to State Route nineteen Harding Way between certain termini, including but not limited to the design, construction, and resurfacing of approximately four point one nine, one nine miles of roadway from the Marl Crawford County Line heading west to the corporate limit, repairing and construction of curbs and curb ramps and replacement of signage and guardrails, together with all necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you.
Julie, you were breaking up there. Can you read that again?
He's not my favorite.
Discussion.
Yes, this came through uh Finance Committee, and um I I was wondering if perhaps uh either Mr. Baldinger or Ms. Colleen could just um give us a brief description.
Miss, not on, so.
Unit is not on?
Nope, not that I could see here. I'm looking.
Or Mr. O'Leary.
Well, this here uh, this here has to do with our uh debt debt uh rollover that we are currently involved with. We have to have this done by uh uh I have to have this mailed out to the banks by June, I think it's the fifth or sixth, somewhere in there. I don't remember the exact.
It has to be the Allison Be- Beasley by June seventh, I think.
By June seventh, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and uh what it is, we're basically uh paying down ten percent down on all of our debt that we're rolling over, and then we're paying off one debt. One piece of debt is the uh, what the mayor, I believe, keeps referring to as the Ralphie's Project there on five ninety-eight North um for the, that last repair out there, and I believe it's a believe the balance is like a hundred and seventy-seven thousand one hundred and some dollars, and there may be a little interest on that, so um in round numbers, we're looking at one seventy-seven, two hundred. So that's basically what we're doing. It's just the debt rollover and uh and paying off a one, one piece of the debt that we have.
Hey, thank you. Other questions? Mr. Richard?
Yeah, thank you. Um I think that uh given the the timeframe that was expressed, uh unless somebody has any other questions, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules on twenty twenty-one dash forty-two and proceed to the final reading.
Read the motion by Mr. Richards. Is there a second? Mr. Triplett second the motion. Roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
We should spend the rules passed by seven oh vote. Now, discussion on the ordinance.
Mr. Phil, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-two.
Mr. Triplett made the motion, seconded by?
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Richard seconded it. A discussion. Roll call.
Is that Mr. Ri- was that Dr. Felner?
Mr. Richard, well.
Okay, okay, all right. Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins? Mr. Botkins?
He left.
Yeah, he just walked away, but Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
It passed by seven oh vote. Uh so moving on then to ordinance twenty twenty-one day forty-three.
Hold on, I'm trying to do multiple things here. Let people leave it out of meetings and ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash forty-three, entitled ordinance authorizing and directing the Safety Service Director and/or Mayor to execute and submit an application for financial assistance to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources under the Nature Works Program, declaring emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance discussion.
Yes, this came through uh Finance Committee, and um we've applied uh many times in the past for Nature Works Grants. Um I believe that this one specifically had to do with a prefabricated restroom at Kobe Park. Did I get that right, Mayor?
He's, he's not in here right, right? Matt is, Matt might be able to answer.
Oh, okay, Matt?
Yes, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, um we were uh, we have in the past um applied for many Nature Works Grants. Uh this is yet another one, and I believed the money was uh, this one was gonna go to a prefabricated restroom at Kobe Park.
Uh prefabricated restroom is correct, and as far as I know, Kobe was the preferred location, but regardless, yes, a prefabricated restroom.
Okay. So uh location perhaps to be determined.
Other discussion?
Uh there's a location that's listed in the ordinance itself.
Yes, that's how it was voted out of committee as at restroom facility for Kobe Park.
Okay.
There's the answer.
Um.
Mr. Richard?
Yes, I would just like to add um that uh um this would be a benefit not only to Kobe Park, uh which for years has kind of been uh it's just been there. Um and especially with the advent of the Freeze money that was passed through uh earlier, which will uh install a dog park in Kobe Park as one of the locations. Uh this kind of goes uh uh together. Uh the only question I had was, uh Matt, did you uh have a timeframe on this?
The grant application deadline is June first.
Okay.
Okay.
Surprise.
Other discussion?
That being said, I'd like to make a motion to suspend uh uh rules and proceed to the final reading on this ordinance.
You've heard the motion by Dr. Felner, suspend the rules, second by Mr. Botkins. Uh roll call.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Passed by a seven oh vote. Now, discussion on the ordinance.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-three.
Okay, motion by Mr. Ivy, seconded by Mr. Triplett. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Order is passed by a seven oh vote. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-one day forty-four, first reading.
Number twenty twenty-one dash forty-four, entitled ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to be a member of the Ohio Association of Public Directors and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance? Do we have a discussion?
Yes, uh this ordinance came through Finance Committee. Um it is dues for um an association of Ohio um for the Safety Service Directors. I believe the fee is in the teens dollars, fourteen or, how much is it, Nikki?
One hundred dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry. A hundred dollars.
For one hundred dollars.
For the uh, but the state requires uh an ordinance for passing.
Yes.
Us, this this ordinance. So I would like to allow Nikki to be, still be a member and suspend the final rule to the, suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on twenty twenty-one dash forty-four.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner, second by Mrs. Earlston. Uh roll call.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
It passed by a seven oh vote. Now, discussion on the ordinance.
Is that a hundred dollars a year or a hundred dollar one-time payment? Do we know?
It's a hundred dollar annual membership mark.
Thanks, Nikki.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-four.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Mr. Botkins. Uh discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Pass final reading by seven oh vote. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-five, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash forty-five, entitled ordinance amending ordinance number twenty dash ninety-two, permanent twenty twenty-one appropriations by transferring funds in the Water Fund and declaring an emergency.
Heard the reading of the ordinance, discussion.
Yes, this came through Finance uh Committee, and I'd like um either uh Mr. Mayor or Mr. Baldinger to uh elaborate a little.
Is Mayor on there?
Nope, he's not back.
Mayor's not, but I can take this one.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Ward.
This is actually for two separate
Where are you going?
Services we need. Um one is for sixteen thousand dollars payable to a consulting firm called S M and E. Um we have to have some plans engineered for the Ammon Dam. There's, there's a slide out there that we need to have engineered so we can um get a set of plans, so we can get that repaired. That's for sixteen thousand dollars. Um the other one is to an individual named Jennifer Jeanette. She used to work for an organization called RCAP. They are a rural community assistance program. They help small communities get funding and get projects underway. She's now gone on her own. And we would like to hire her to help us with several different aspects of of some consulting services we need at the water plant. She's much less expensive than other engineering firms that we have worked with. She'll help us, help us with a funding plan development, um asset management plan, a- all kinds of different things, and her, her fee is thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. So we just need to move some money from the infrastructure line up to technical services, so we're able to get this stuff completed. The study for um Ammons is something that is pretty top priority because that's something ODNR has um pointed to as a, as a top priority for us to get addressed. So um need to get the the funds moved as soon as possible.
I I'd like to uh just clarify um what Ms. Ward said about Ammons and the slide. It is not a recreational slide. It is a lane slide. It's an area where um there is uh an embankment and a uh a a a bridge and or uh depending on who defines it. Um so this is a serious piece of um uh thing that ODNR pointed to uh directly as like priority one. So um again, this isn't a pool slide or anything like that. Um the other fund uh for the um uh the consultant, uh there are a very lengthy list of ODNR concerns about our reservoirs and other um things related to uh, you know, our our water plants. So um I I think that both of these are um worthwhile uh purchases. So uh that with that being said, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and proceed to the final reading on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash forty-five.
Heard the motion by Dr. Felner. We have a second. Mrs. Earlston, second of the motion. Roll call.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Motion passed by seven oh vote. Discussion on the ordinance.
I have a question. Can I ask? Um so for the contractor that we're hiring, is she, is it just a one-time payment, or how are we paying her? Is it hourly? Or what is that gonna look like? Is she gonna be an employee? What, what is it?
No, it's a, it's a contract for thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. She gave us the option of either paying her eight hundred and fifty dollars a month or thirteen thousand five hundred dollar lump sum. Either way, it adds up to the same amount. But um the other engineers or consultants that we have worked with, they've given us quotes in the upper twenties to forty thousand dollar range. Um I think Ms. Jeanette, having just gone out on her own, is is really working hard, and she's actually a local person. She lives outside of Galleon, so I think kind of the hometown discount, um in addition to her, you know, just getting started with her business, but I think she's gonna be really useful in helping us um access funding for different projects.
And is she an engineer? I mean, can she make these recommendations and really guide us in the way that a professional firm could do? I don't mean to sound negative. I just wanna make sure that we're not getting into something where maybe she's not, I don't know her. So is she qualified to be doing this?
Yeah, she, she won't be doing engineering plans. She'll be doing things like um asset management plans, contingency plans. Um things that are, they're sort of boilerplate, but not. Uh so they're not, she's not an engineer. She just is a consultant, and as I said, she's, one of her specialties is funding. So she'll know where we can go to get funding for for plans that engineers actually design. Um oftentimes, they don't have someone on staff that is a specialist in accessing all the EPA and ODNR and other um small community funds that we might be able to tap with our population.
Okay, and have you worked with her before, or how did she find out about the project and kind of what's your history with her? And that's just a really big thing to kind of take on. I just, I'm curious.
Sure.
She learned about it, or how you know her?
We have, we've reached out to RCAP on a couple of different things. Um their, their limit on population is ten thousand. We've always been slightly over it, you know, like ten thousand fifty in the last census, I think. So they weren't able to work with us on paper. But she kind of walked us through a couple of things and tried to help to the best of her ability. But now that she's not with RCAP, there's not that ten thousand population limit that she has to work with. So she's familiar with Galleon and kind of one of, some of the things that we're looking at having to to address for the EPA and ODNR. So she's not coming into this totally, totally blind. She is familiar with our situation, and like I said, kind of has walked us through a couple of things, sort of, I don't wanna say off the record, but in an unofficial way.
Okay, and are you paying her monthly? Are you paying her a lump sum?
I, I don't think it matters, Kara. If you guys have a preference, she can bill us monthly, but you know, lump sum is either way, we have a set list of of deliverables. You know, it'd be my preference to do a one-and-done, just like we do with most um consultants, just pay them when the services have been rendered.
Okay, I didn't know if it was after. Okay. I didn't know if it was after services were rendered or beforehand. That was my only concern is if we paid her and then the services didn't get completed. But if it's afterwards, that makes more sense, I guess.
Yeah, we, we typically pay once they deliver the product. And, you know, she may bill us in increments. She delivers the, you know, the contingency plan. She may bill us a couple of thousand bucks or something like that. But we, we don't pay until we have a, a product in hand.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering my questions.
Sure.
Ms. Earlston.
Yeah, Nikki, will she be, will she actually write the grants or just kind of guide us towards where we can get the grant money?
She'll help us with the application process.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, those, the EPA and ODNR grants, they are, they're ugly. They're ugly.
That's why I was kind of wondering if she, you know, how much guidance she can give us.
Yeah, because they, they want information. I mean, down to how many water users of certain capacities we have. And I mean, it's, it's a really lengthy, in-depth application for most of those. So she, she's familiar with those. That's what she did at RCAP. So she'll be able to guide us through all of that.
Okay, so she'll, she'll, you know, walk with us through those grants.
Yes. And I think what the most, the thing I'm most excited about is she knows where to go for money that otherwise we might not know to tap.
Yeah, that's, that's a great access, access, asset.
Anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty one dash forty five.
You heard the motion by Dr. Felner, second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Ivy. Discussion. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Okay, the order is passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty one dash forty six, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty one dash forty six, intent ordinance establishing the Health Department mosquito grant fund two thirty one, declaring an emergency.
Read the reading ordinance. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take this one, Carl.
Go ahead.
Okay, what the, the state of Ohio is requiring us now to, to separate out the revenue for the Health Department that involves grants. They want each and every one of their grants in a separate fund now and separated from their, their operating capital. Thought like the mosquito grant is going to be two, the one we're setting up right now. It's the first piece of of multiple of these funds as every time they accept a grant, we're going to have to create a fund for the, for whatever grant they accept from here on out. And so this is going to be the first one of quite of a long list of grants that they will be receiving. So. Let's.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Richard.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. President. I see here that there's a retroactive date on here. So I'm assuming that.
We're actually expecting the funds to show up tomorrow.
Well, that.
That's what we're expecting. And that's, we, we, we need to pass this as an emergency because we have, got to have a place to put these funds tomorrow.
Well, then, then you just led me right into my next statement is that I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on twenty twenty one dash forty six and move to the final reading.
Read the motion by Mr. Richard, seconded by Mrs. Earlston. Roll call.
Yes. You're muted, Julie.
Sorry. Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
The order is twenty twenty one dash forty six, passed by seven oh vote. Moving on to Resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven, first reading.
Wait a minute, I missed the.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance.
Okay.
Resolution twenty twenty.
Hit his horse here. Okay, you heard the motion by Mr. Triplett to pass the ordinance. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Richard seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Okay, it passed by seven oh vote. Time by getting the horse, heart before the hurt. Moving on to Resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven, first reading.
Resolution number twenty twenty one dash eleven, it's our resolution approving the appointment of Chad Miller to the Galleon Port Authority Board of Directors and declaring an emergency.
Read the reading, the resolution, discussion.
Yes, this came through Airport and Economic Development. And we're delighted that Chad would, again, accept this appointment to the Galleon Port Authority. He's knowledgeable and level-headed and even-tempered. So with that said, I'd like to suspend the rules and pass ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven and move to the final reading.
Read the motion by Dr. Felner, second by Mrs. Earlston. Roll call.
Resolution.
Thank you.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Okay, passed by seven oh vote on the res, uh, resolution, discussion.
I'll make the motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven.
Okay, Mr. Triplett made the motion, seconded by Mr. Ivy. Discussion. Chad, cover your ears while we vote, okay?
Mr. President, I just, one more thing. I'd like to piggyback on Dr. Felner's description of Chad. I think he's been an asset to the Port Authority. And I'm so happy that he is willing to continue in that.
Thank you. Thank you. I think we all feel the same way. Other discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Okay, they passed by seven oh vote. Welcome aboard again, Chad. Okay, next, moving on to Resolution twenty twenty one dash twelve as the first reading.
Resolution number twenty twenty one dash twelve, intent on resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the department heads and Safety Service Director and approving a then-and-now certificate for said expenditure and declaring an emergency.
Okay, you heard the reading, the resolution, discussion.
Yes, this came through Finance Committee. And this is to pay an invoice to ourselves, to the Electric Department for electricity. There was a invoice, a bill of that was, that needs to be paid. So this is it. Do we need to elaborate anymore on that, Gail or the mayor?
Nikki, if she probably has the best
Okay.
description of how that happened. I don't think Jaime's on here, is he?
No, he's not.
Okay. All right, Nikki, if you want to amplify or add on or whatever.
Sure. So I think the easiest way to put this is in an attempt to get bills paid, we had too many cooks in the kitchen. So the bills were, some bills were paid off of a purchase order by person unbeknownst to the other. So this is for the March utility bill for the water depart, for the water plant. There wasn't enough on the purchase order. By the time that was realized, the, the April bill had been generated. So it had sort of a, a double down effect. We've opened a new purchase order. So the new utility bills are covered, but it did created then and now for the March and April bills.
Okay, discussion.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to the final reading on Resolution twenty twenty one dash twelve.
We heard the motion by Dr. Felner. We have a second. Mr. Richard seconded the motion. Roll call.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
It passed by seven oh vote. Discussion on the resolution.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution number twenty twenty one dash twelve.
Read the motion by Mr. Triplett. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Mr. Richard seconded. Roll call or discussion? No discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
It passed by seven oh vote. Next Resolution twenty twenty one days thirteen, first reading.
Resolution number twenty twenty one dash thirteen, Tower Resolution approving the appointment of Amanda Moran in City Health Board as appointed by the city mayor and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of the resolution, discussion. Mayor, would you like to take this?
Yep, Amanda had shown an interest I, just several months ago, when we made an appointment to the board, I believe it was Candy Yocum that was selected. And then when, oh, Brittany Kraft offered her resignation, we'd already had the conversation. She expressed her interest. So we had you know, a candidate that was willing to serve and we'd already interviewed her. So in order to, because the health board's going through, going to be going through a little bit of a turbulent time with the state budget and such, felt like to get, to get that board back to full strength, it would be important to not bypass the committee. But I talked with Tammy about it and I don't think there was any, any dissatisfaction with the pick. And if, in fact, really to say it differently, there's, you know, sport, support for the, for the choice.
Thank you. The discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richard.
If there's no other discussion, I, I'm always amazed that we have citizens here in town that are willing to volunteer for the various positions here in the community. Having said that, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on twenty, or Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirteen and move it to the final reading.
Read the motion by Mr. Richard. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mrs. Earlston seconded it. Roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Passed by seven oh votes, spend the rules now on the resolution, discussion.
I'll make a motion to pass Resolution twenty twenty one dash thirteen.
Read the motion by Mr. Triplett to pass the resolution. We have a second.
A second.
Mr. Ivy seconded it. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Okay, passed by seven oh vote. Okay, moving on to other business. Any council members have other business to bring up?
Committee meeting.
None? Okay.
I think we, we have some committee meetings before that we need to announce, Carl.
Okay, you don't have any for next week, but you got some. How about Mr. Triplett?
Right.
Uh, whatever, the first Wednesday of June.
Second.
The second.
Thank you.
So that will be Council Chambers, Council Chambers, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Uh, yes, uh, it, um, the June first would be law ordinances. Mark, do you want to do it in Council Chambers? That's kind of prior to the mask release.
Okay.
He's asking a question, Carl.
I, I didn't hear the question.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter, Mike, whatever you want to do.
Well, yeah, I was up, I, I know about the mask is, issue. So why don't we tentatively say Zoom? Given the parameters and then go from there.
Okay. Discussion on the mask issue.
Well, yeah, because it doesn't expire till the second. So Mike's committee is going to be via Zoom on the first. So on the second, we'll be in person because the mandate and social distancing is over.
Okay. Any other committees before the next meeting? If none, moving on to Auditor Baldiger.
I have nothing for tonight.
Thank you. Treasurer Sparks, is he on?
No.
I don't think so. Lauder actor Palmer.
Nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Larry, you're on.
You know, there's a, a dozen things. I would only add that we got a notification from ODOT of an increase in the engineer's estimate on our Portland Way project. So we'll have to go back to the drawing board. I don't think that expense will likely hit this year. So we're going to have to look at how to, how to you know, make sure that there's sufficient funds to get that project left by the state. But, you know, it's just I think it's going to be the way of the world. Things, just the cost of things going up all around us. So anyway, with that good news, that's really all I've got unless, unless there are some questions.
Anybody else have anything good for the order? Can you hear me, Julie?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Nobody else has anything good for the order? Okay, I don't either. So would you have a motion to adjourn?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Triplett made the motion, second by Mrs. Earlston. Discussion. If they were to say aye. Opposed likewise, meeting hereby adjourned at eight twelve. Okay, good night, all.